Call a meeting to order for East Greenwood Central School District, Board of Education meeting, Columbia High School, April 20th. Our usual board meeting is held on Wednesdays, but with the BOSI's vote and nominations for board members, the meeting has been moved to April 20th, Tuesday. So attendance tonight, we have board members Kathleen Curtin, Mark Mann, John Dunn, myself, Frank Yubowa, and Deanna Youth here at the Columbia High School library. And we do have three board members who we expect to join us momentarily. They're running a little bit late, but we do have a quorum to start the meeting. So with that, please rise and join me with the pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone. With the meeting we had last Wednesday, we do not have the student council from Columbia this evening, so we'll see them in a couple of weeks and get some updates. With that, we will move to the public forum. And as always, as we've been virtual, I remind folks that there's an email set up on the website for you to make comments via that process, and we will read those emails as we get them. And there's also a public forum later on if there's information that you want to hear during the board meeting, and then address any comments afterwards. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or officers in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited, we declare it out of order. So with that, again, reminder, email is set up for the public for comments. And Linda, do we have any emails?
There are no public comments at this time.
Okay, no public comments at the time, thank you. And just like I mentioned earlier, if there's information, as you heard the board meeting this evening, that you want to respond to, there is a second public forum. And I see Ms. Massey has joined us. Hello, Jennifer. Hear us okay? Yep, very good, okay. The next order of business on the board agenda is the board forum and superintendent report, and we'll hear from our superintendent on the presentation of the school reopening plan based on the guidance that we received not too long ago. Mr. Simons?
Thank you, Mr. Bino. Want to provide an update to the Board of Education and the community this evening regarding the changes that have occurred in the New York State Department of Health guidance and regulations. I'm going to ask Mr. Goodwin if you could pull up the slides. Yes. So prior to the spring recess, we had been advocating for changes in the New York State Department of Health regulations to incorporate the CDC guidance that would permit school districts under certain contexts and circumstances to reduce the six feet social distancing requirement to three feet, enabling our district to accommodate more students in our classrooms. That change in the regulation was issued to the districts in New York State on Friday at the end of spring break, April 9th. During the course of the last couple of weeks, our administrative team has been reviewing that guidance and developing plans to implement changes to our reopening plan that would enable the district to accommodate more students. We want to go over the requirements and also recommend to you some plans moving forward beginning next week. So as an introduction, throughout this process, going all the way back to March of last spring, and as we reopened in September under the state's guidance, the priority has been the health and safety of our students, our staff, and our families. Additionally, during the period at which we have been operating under a hybrid offering in-person learning to our students, virtual live instruction, and full remote options as required by the regulations, we have avoided large-scale quarantines and circumstances where COVID-19 has caused some districts to have to shift for multiple days and multiple times from in-person learning to virtual learning back to in-person learning. With the exception of two days prior to the Christmas recess, our model has remained consistent, and we have done an effective job of ensuring that no cases of COVID-19 have been spread within our schools, either student to student, student to staff, or staff to students. As different periods of time have occurred during the year and the COVID-19 infection rates have spiked and eventually have come down, really around late January into February and now into the spring, we made adjustments to our program to prioritize the students who presented the greatest needs. And that included special education students, alternative education students, in our OG CAP, CTEP, jumpstart programs, and our students who receive English as a new language service. Those students have been coming into school four days a week. And over time, as we've made adjustments to staffing, the use of classroom space, we have brought our kindergarteners in five days a week, our grade one students, and the day we returned from spring break was the first day that we had all of our second grade students in, whose families wanted them to be in, five days per week. We eliminated virtual Wednesdays at the elementary school level as we looked for ways to provide extra academic support and mental health support to our students. And we continue to evaluate new guidance that was coming from the state that would permit interscholastic athletics, including higher-risk sports for the winter season and in the fall too season. And our board approved the plans to offer every sport that we were permitted to provide for our students. And if we move into the spring season, we have approved in-person after-school clubs and activities such as drama club, as well as the other clubs that are currently now operating in person. Additionally, the CDC guidance came out on March 19th. It did take a while for the state to review that guidance and incorporate that into the regulations. The recommendation to move from six feet to three feet was supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as the World Health Organization. Additionally, our school district joined other school districts in our region to request our BOSI's to advocate that this change be incorporated within the new state regulations. And on April 9th, those regulations were issued. Moving forward, Peter? We have reviewed the guidance, and we have shared this information with all of our faculty and staff at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. We've shared this guidance with our community and our parents last evening at a parent meeting, which was very well attended. Face masks are required at all times, with the exception of meals. In classrooms where the social distancing is moved from six feet to three feet, masks have to remain on at all times. And so our principals are developing plans with staff at the elementary school level for mask breaks to occur in a different setting, whether that be in small groups, going out into the hallway and spacing out six feet, going into the cafeteria when that's not being utilized, incorporating mask breaks where they are able to have six feet social distancing. In common areas such as gymnasiums, cafeterias, and hallways, students and staff are also required to remain at six feet. And the only circumstances in which students would be not wearing their masks is when they're eating or on a mask break where students are six feet apart. Additionally, there was a lot of conversations in many counties across the state about permitting school districts to open up and move from six feet to three feet with the polycarbonate barriers. We had plans in place to inventory what we needed and to purchase what we needed. Thankfully, we didn't because those barriers are no longer recommended by the CDC and the new New York State Department of Health guidance. Some key points that we've been sharing with our families and with our staff. The CDC permits schools to move to a three-feet marker for social distancing, but that marker is connected to the community transmission rate. And that transmission rate is measured on different metrics than what are currently used in New York State. They're more restrictive. Schools and counties are classified into being in a low moderate risk transmission area, a substantial risk of transmission area, or a high risk. There are only a few counties in New York State that are not considered right now based on CDC metrics to not be in a high risk of transmission. Rensselaer County, despite the fact that we have a 1.5% infection rate on a seven-day rolling average today, is still considered to be a county by CDC requirements in a high-risk transmission zone. Under these circumstances, at the middle school and the high school level, the parameters change. Middle schools and high schools are not permitted to move from six feet to three feet unless they can cohort students. Cohorting is defined by the Department of Health as grouping students with other students in permanent fixed groups and groups that do not intermingle with other cohorts of fixed students. At a large high school of 1,200 to 1,300 students and a middle school of almost 980 students, we would have to completely change student schedules, student options for courses, reassign students to different teachers, and reassign different teachers to different classes. At this time of the year, to do that is impossible, as I reported at the last meeting, without being more disruptive of our children's education. So we're going to move forward where we can and implement this guidance and continue to look at what we might be able to do at the middle school and the high school level. Peter? So what we are proposing is that effective Monday, all students in grade three, grade four, and five will join their peers in grades K-2 for five days of in-person instruction effective Monday, April 26th. The classroom arrangements have been made by principals. We are able to accommodate all children right now in each of the five elementary schools in those grade levels with three feet social distancing. Furniture has arrived, classrooms are being set up, cafeteria arrangements, in some cases are being used in the cafeteria for lunch, a computer lab, for example, and we have a tent at one of the elementary schools that we are going to be putting up. Cohorting is not possible right now in our secondary schedules. We would have to take a look at that and what might be able to be done for the fall if this requirement is still in place. And we will be advocating for the elimination of the cohort requirement for students so that our middle school and our high school students can get back in full-time in September. The district is looking at grade six in particular as the next stage of this, and we've informed our staff. We're looking at a learning pod support model that would bring our sixth graders in. We need a little bit more time because today was the end of the period at which we have surveyed our families. We have been promoting the survey so that we can plug the numbers of students that want to come back in person into our existing schedules to A, see if there's room, and B, how that model might work. That model would require some kids every day in each of the classes that are running each period to move outside the classroom to a space that would be available and supervised by staff to have live streaming coming in from within the school. Some might say, well, if they're going to be live streaming, why don't they just livestream from home? We've known since we've been doing this that some kids, just having to go to school, follow more of a routine, having a little bit more social interaction, would do better academically. We've done that model at the high school. You can see on some of our tables, there's expectations for some of the learning pods that we've used here. We want to make sure that will work, that there's enough rooms available to do that, and that we have enough staff available to do that as we look at seventh and eighth grade as well. As many students as we can accommodate for as many days as we can in-person learning, we're going to try to do this year, but again, at the middle school and the high school level, we have to have those students remain at six feet. We won't know for another week or so what those options might be. And we're going to continue to offer the full remote program to our K-12 students. We do have a number of families of children who have been on full remote. Remember, those are different teachers who have requested to come back. Anybody who has made a request to have their child come back from full remote, as of today, we have space. There may be some situations that after April 26th, where families may request to shift to full in-person learning, they may have to go to a school other than their neighborhood school for the remainder of the year. Red Mill is tight, particularly in the second grade, and Green Meadow is tight in the fifth grade right now, but we do have slots in the other schools. Next slide. Again, classroom space. We remember that we had used two spaces for one class in some cases at the K-2 level. We left it up to individual buildings to work with our teachers as to whether or not they would have our K-2 classes go back to three feet now. In some cases, as a practical matter, the teachers felt that that was better to have all the kids together and go to three feet. In other cases, the model that was in place with the teaching assistants and the teacher working together in two separate space has been working. So we left that up to the discretion of the teacher with guidance from the principal in each building. All grade three through five classes will be three feet or more, but really generally around three feet. And we are continuing to have conversations with the county about what we might be able to do as an alternative to cohorting so that we could get better prepared for what we might be able to do at the middle school and the high school for the remainder of the year and what September might look like for kids at that level. Next slide. We are maintaining art library, music, and physical education instruction at the same number of minutes on the same schedule that has been in place since September, although in some spaces and some buildings, we have to deliver art either in the art room in most cases, or in some cases where the grade level is larger, more students at that grade level, or where we include special education classes into an art class, a music class, or a PE class, or a library. Sometimes the classroom space is larger, so the teacher pushes into the room to still deliver that program. But those programs are not changing in terms of the amount of time kids get those special area courses, which are important. It just may be delivered a little bit differently in different space depending on the number of kids. Next slide. Cafeteria and lunch. Again, every student during lunch has to be six feet apart. Bell top, the capacity of the cafeteria is fine. There are no other locations that need to be used for lunch. At DPS, one of our smaller buildings, they'll be using the cafeteria, the computer lab, and the second grade, which is the largest grade, will be having lunch outside. Tent location has been identified. We have the tent. We're completing the paperwork process. Board is approving some items this evening, and we think we should be in good shape on the tent, thanks to Ms. Wagler and Mr. Bickle, who made some modifications today to get what we needed. Janay Cafeteria has the right capacity, Green Meadow, Red Mill. There are some grade levels at Red Mill that are a little bit smaller, that can eat lunch in a classroom and still be six feet apart. Those lunch arrangements will be supervised by either a teaching assistant or a monitor. And we've left golf in Columbia on there because if we do bring more kids in, we are able to use the cafeteria and the gym at the same time now that the weather is nicer for extra space for lunch accommodations. Next group. Busing has been a concern of all districts. We reviewed the impact of grade three, four, and five on our buses, and we feel that we will still be able to, as practical, implement social distancing. We're not able to have one student per seat on every bus, but in those cases, we will do the best that we can within the parameters. We've shared information with other districts. We're all in the same situation. We're going to keep the windows open, the hatch open, provide as much fresh air as possible. And in all cases, the rule is still students and drivers and aides are all wearing those masks. Arrival and dismissal procedures, we don't anticipate any changes at this time. We have to monitor what the impact will be on parent drop-off and bus drop-off for the first few days. We may be changing that. There are situations at Janay and Red Mill that are challenging in terms of the backup of the traffic for parent drop-off. In the case of Red Mill, we are encouraging more families to have their children ride the bus because that would alleviate some of the congestion throughout Hampton Manor. Mask breaks, just to reiterate, this is a change. Anytime the kids are within less than six feet of one another, those masks got to be on. Masks got to be on. They will be able to take them off for periods of time at recess under supervision for short periods of time and during phys ed, but they won't have them off for the whole duration of recess. Here are our timelines. We had today, yesterday, we had a virtual community meeting. This afternoon, we met with middle school and high school together at 2:40, 2:45. We met immediately afterwards with our elementary teachers around 3:50. We used the thought exchange to address any questions and concerns that the teachers and the faculty might have. We did have meetings with transportation last week and custodial staff. We're going to do that again with our transportation staff because some of our transportation folks were not able to be at the meeting. I think that's tomorrow, just to kind of follow up with those that couldn't come to our second meeting last week. We're reviewing the changes with the board this evening. If the board supports the plan, our plan is to update the written document that is available on our website and has been submitted to the state ed portal tomorrow. That document simply takes the information that's on these slides, plugs in three feet wherever we had six feet at the elementary level, describes the mask procedure a little bit more specifically, and includes a document that I had shared with the board that describes the classroom arrangements, the lunch arrangements, the transportation arrangements, and everything that was in that grid that I believe is posted on board docs as well right now as an appendix to the plan. So we feel we're ready to go at the K-5 level, and we will continue to develop some of the options that we've talked about for grade six through 12 as we continue to look at the data we're getting back from our parents. We're not going to be able to accommodate the 90-some-odd percent parents at the middle school and high school level this year who want their kids to come back five days per week. We wish we could. We wish that the three feet were the six feet, and we'll continue to advocate for what we can do between now and September. So at this point, I'll take any questions or concerns that the board might have.
All right, as Jeff said, is there any follow-up questions that would like to be asked about the plan? I'll just open it up to the board members. Anything? No, good, good. Jennifer, you're good? Okay, very good. So I think the information that we've been sharing all along, it's consistent with what we discussed in the past, and I support the moving forward with the, I think the board members here have expressed support for the plan and the reopening adjustments and to move forward, and we'll address that in a resolution later on. So thank you for all the work and the administration, teachers working together. Glad to hear that the committee forum went well, and we got the feedback we needed and can address any concerns as we reopen again for the three through five next week.
Thank you, Mr. Bino. If anybody has any questions or concerns after reviewing everything, please send me an email. I'd be happy to address it.
So timeframe to go to the portal would be tomorrow after the board?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay.
We also have to submit the plan to the county, but the county will not be approving them.
Just a submission.
The county, we just have to submit them.
Okay. If there's further adjustments, based on whatever information comes through, we can still go back in the portal depending on the guidance, make any adjustments?
The plan can be changed at any time because it's a link. It's just a link.
It's a link, okay.
Portal to our existing document on our website, so we can update it. We can revise it at any time.
And I think that's important because if we do shift, are able to shift again, we want to be able to update that and move as quickly as possible.
Neither the state or the county will be approving any of the changes to the plan. We just have to have it available.
Available for reviewing.
Very good.
Excellent. All right, if there's no questions regarding the plan, then I do a general board comments. I'll start here in the room on my left with Kathleen. Anything? Very good, thank you. Mark, you're good? John, you're good? Frank, good? And Deanna is good? And Jennifer, any comments? You're good? And I'm good as well. Jennifer, I'm sorry, Joanne or Michelle has not joined us yet? Just want to make sure to give an opportunity to speak if they are there. I don't see them. Do you, Peter? No? Okay. So we'll give Mr. Simons a second to take a breather, and then we'll move to the next discussion item. So this is something I discussed at the last meeting, just to kind of get an update where we are with the planning on the Columbia's graduation and the other end-of-year events that we could talk about, you know, elevation ceremonies, things like that, and senior proms and all that good stuff that we typically celebrate towards the end of the school year. So, Mr. Simons?
I'm going to kick most of this over to Mr. Harkin, who I see on the screen. Just in general, I will say that the state did issue guidance earlier this year than last year regarding graduations and end-of-year events. Those guidance prescribe the capacity of the number of people that can participate in ceremonies and differentiate between outdoor and indoor. And at certain thresholds, COVID-19 testing results and vaccination proof is required. So we're trying to consider options that may be, would not require that because we feel that that would be administratively difficult to manage. Mr. Harkin?
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Good evening, everybody. Yes, we have a lot of things going on, and we've already done a lot of things, so I just want to fill everybody in. Our parents of the class of 2021 have planned several events. Their next event is May 5th, and we are calling it Future Intentions Day. Flyers went out yesterday inviting all our seniors to the parking lot. We'll social distance and have a nice breakfast out there, and then we plan to use the baseball field to take a picture of all our seniors. And we've asked any senior that is entering the military, college, workforce, gap year, or apprenticeship to please bring their colors and to celebrate their next step of their life. So we're really excited to have that breakfast on the 5th. The parents group has raised the money and has donations from Hannaford and Stewart's. So that is our next event that we have planned for the seniors. That same group has also provided sleigh riding. They did a bowling event. They've handed out gift bags twice at dismissal to the seniors, so they've really done a lot to try to make this year special for them. So I do want to thank my parents from the class of 2021. And I know that they're also talking about maybe doing a game night at some point in May out on the turf field if we could get some time to do like cornhole and can jam and things like that, just to try to get the group together. So that's the next thing that we have planned. In regards to the senior prom, we met with Birch Hill, and we are finalizing a contract. We also have planned a walk-through prom at the school. So the senior class officers are meeting Thursday after school, and they're going to review both of the proposals and put up a vote, and we will have a plan to announce to all the seniors first thing Friday morning. Both of them are great ideas. The walk-through prom in the building has all different stations and food and things like that. And then Birch Hill, because they have two pavilions, it would allow us to have the whole group together. We could do 150 in one pavilion and 175 in the other pavilion, and that would allow all of our seniors to come. The one thing that we are looking for with that, though, is because this is our large class, we have 353 seniors. We're not allowing anyone other than our seniors to come, so we're not allowing dates from other grade levels or outside of schools. We're going to try to keep it great in within our own group and have that. Whatever event we do decide on, we also have a red carpet walk-through scheduled for the front of Columbia High School. So in years past, they would come into the auditorium, walk across the stage, and have their picture taken. That would propose, that would be difficult, again, like Mr. Simon said, we would have over 200 people in there. We'd have to get COVID tests. So we do it in front of the building, and we do it in a drive-up format where you're given a time, and you drive right up, and you hop out with your date, you walk across the front of the building, get your picture taken. We looked at a company that's going to make it look like the Oscars, so we're really excited about that. And that'll be regardless of what we choose for the venue. We also have the following week. That was June 12th is the prom. The senior parade, which was something that we did last year, which was really successful. So we're excited to try that again. Lineup will be at nine o'clock at Janay. And I think it's going to be exciting because we're going to invite all the teachers K through 12. You're all welcome to come to the parking lot. It was a great turnout. I think it'll be nice this year, too. A Little League in softball have games that day, so they'll be driving by the baseball fields, and then they'll make their way over to the high school, and we'll give them their senior send-offs that they deserve. And then the following weekend, the weekend of the 26th, is graduation. Our traditional venue, Hudson Valley, is not available. They believe they'll still be doing vaccinations. They will give me a definitive answer mid-May. If they're still administering first shots in mid-May, then they'll be giving second shots through June, and they will not be, will not be able to use the McDonough Center, which we've been to in the past. And that would also present an issue because the capacity in there would be 10%, and we wouldn't be able to get the graduates, all the graduates in there. The baseball field, unfortunately, has a new home team, and they have, they have games that weekend, and the field is not available that weekend. We looked at the outside field. And I just learned today that SPAC is only allowing 600 people at a time, so that wouldn't accommodate us, and that has caused a tailspin for the Um, and that has caused a tailspin um for the Saratoga County schools. And I also learned today, I'm going to follow back up and I'll present this to Mr. Simons. The Times Union Center um had. Quoted us on a really outrageous amount of money. Um, and it also would require testing. And uh, all the Albany County schools pulled out of the Times Union Center. So the Times Union Center has cut their price in half. So I'm going to follow back up with them and find out exactly what the cost would be. Um, and then the testing protocols. Like Mr. Simon says, because we'd be inside, um, we may be able to get parents and all the graduates together. But then again, it would require everyone to be tested. The parents, the students, the staff members that work it or provide a proof of vaccination. And, and I have to agree with Mr. Simons, my biggest fear would be a parent um not being able to be there because of that testing and that maybe not fully understanding. That they have to have that test or that vaccine and we wouldn't want to have a scene. At our graduation when they're there to celebrate, you know, a, a great moment in their child's life because they'd had the COVID vaccination. So we also have reserved the stage and they, they videographer that we had last year for the football field. And we feel we could reduce the number of sessions down to seven, possibly six. And we could do 50 kids. Um, with two parents would be 150 and we had about 37 employees that worked the event last year. And that would keep us under the 200 limit. We wouldn't have to do any testing and we could run those ceremonies. Um, and we, we think that would be a great idea too. So we, we have lots of, lots of options. I will finalize everything in the next two weeks. I'll get those to Mr. Simons. Um, and I'll look forward to you guys giving me some direction on what way you guys, everyone would like to go.
Thanks, Michael. That's a, a great update. Uh, what's happening and, and. You know, really appreciate the parents of the seniors and, and. Pulling out all the stops to make it this special kind of end of year celebration for their, for their kids and the, and the families. So. Um, yeah, whatever we can do to accommodate as many kids as we can and, and family members, you know, it was a long graduation, but I. Last year, but it was a great event and I think folks appreciated it. If we can get more, less sessions and the weather holds out. That'd be, uh, be wonderful. And um, yeah, keep us posted. I think those are great events and. Starting on May 5th and right through to June and um, looking forward to, to being able to see that and the parade and. And celebrating our seniors again. So thanks for all the work and the student council and the parents putting it all together. Any questions for, for Michael? Anybody? Nope. All right. Sounds like a great plan. Appreciate it, Mike. Moving on to our uh, committee reports now, we have, I think, just the one, Marissa. Okay, Marissa, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Bino. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Our district is looking to partner with Young's Pharmacy and General Store to offer a COVID-19 vaccination clinic at Columbia High School this spring. The clinic would offer the Pfizer vaccine for free for any students who are at least 16 years of age or older with parent consent. The vaccine would be administered by the pharmacy. And the pharmacy has also agreed to have a team of about three to four individuals to help families check in as soon as they arrive at the high school. The district has sent out an interest form to families and parents yesterday to see whether they would like their child. To receive the COVID vaccine at a school sponsored clinic. The interest form needs to be completed by Wednesday, April 21st by 4:00 PM. And once we have that data as to how many individuals are interested, we would be working with Young's Pharmacy and General Store on next steps. Uh, we've been informed that the Pfizer vaccine comes in trays of about 1,200 doses. So we want to make sure we're able to use all of those doses. So Mr. Simons and I have discussed um, opening up the clinic to our neighboring school districts.
So this would be um. 16 and over? Any, any, that open?
16 um, and over for students with parent consent. Um, and then certainly if there's extra doses, once we've captured our student population, um, we were looking to offer it to staff and as well.
Okay. Sounds good. I, I know that Young's has been participating in the vaccine process um, since the vaccine came out. A lot of the local school districts and their other counties have ran uh onsite vaccination clinics for their staff. And I think community members as well. So um, they have the experience. We're just providing really the um. Location, facility. Are we providing any staff for this at all?
Um, Young's Pharmacy said they will not need any staff. The only thing that they will need is access to our wifi and they're coming equipped with their own computers.
Okay. So does anybody have questions?
Five to eight time slot.
And it'll be a time slots and things like that?
Depending on how many. People we get. We want to get as close to that dosage availability as possible. Our, we were gonna, once we knew our survey and how many people we would expect. I've been in communication with the superintendent at Avril Park. Since Avril Park is the community at which the pharmacy is located in, they would be our, their first district to reach out to.
Okay.
And to try in combination to have. As close to a thousand doses as possible.
I see. Okay. So Mark, you have a question?
Yes, I have a couple. One, um, I'd like to find out what uh. Um, so if we're letting an outside organization come into our schools. Whenever we let other outside organizations come into our schools, we make sure they have insurance policies. We make sure they filled out building use forms. We charge them a fee. So I mean, that's our policy. So is that going to be the case here?
Well, they have to, I'm not sure about the fee. We'd have to talk about that. We didn't consider that. We, they would still have to follow every policy that we do for outside. Organizations.
So the, the, the.
Haven't gotten that far yet.
Young's Pharmacy would, I mean, I won't support it if they don't fill out a building use form. They don't provide insurance. I'd like to see what our uh, legal team has to say as far as, you know, issuing out. Medication on school grounds. Um, sponsored by us. And letting an outside organization come in to administer the shot. So before I would. You know, agree to that, I would like to, to at least get those answers.
Absolutely. And then those are very smart questions I had posed to Jeff when we, uh, we heard about, we were approached by Young's Pharmacy. And it would be also in conjunction with uh, perhaps with our school districts because that's, that's a lot of doses to be.
We're still trying to figure out if it's viable or not because in the initial survey that Mr. Adam reported to me today, a lot of kids have already gotten their first shot. So we don't know if it's viable yet, but yes, we will address all those concerns.
Absolutely. Kathleen?
Okay, I, I do have one other question. I've actually volunteered at the vaccine clinics myself and I know they also have somebody who's. They have medical personnel who's there for adverse reactions. And would we be providing that because it doesn't sound like the pharmacy? I mean, I know when we run the vaccine clinics at Schenectady County, we have an entire area that it's equipped with. Uh, wheelchairs and because if you have somebody who has a bad reaction, they're, you need someplace for them to lay down or. So I, I would just want to know the area that we would have set up for that, just in case.
I'll look into that.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we're all, those who were vaccinated, you know, I went through Hudson Valley. Um, the process was very, very involved. I had kind of a lot of these same questions. How does a small pharmacy in Avila Park? Logistically provide that kind of access and numbers?
I, I know like Schenectady County is actually doing it for Schenectady High because that's actually this Sunday. And they're doing it not during school time. They're doing it on a weekend so that they can kind of move in with all their. Pieces.
Exactly, yep.
And do it as Schenectady County. They're just using the, the school literally just as the site, but they're doing everything as Schenectady County.
Sure, sure. Yeah. It's still, still a lot of questions to be answered, logistics to be followed. And I know that uh, it's a big undertaking and we. Yeah. We, we know it's important to address the safety concerns and any legal concerns that uh, come with running such a clinic. Um, Jennifer, any questions or Frank or Deanna? No? Okay. All right. So still in its infancy, kind of an idea. Um, I think community based clinics are, are a good idea. It's a matter of making sure that they're done well and done correctly and safely. So.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Linda, Jim or Jeff? I don't think there was any other conversation.
I do not have any reports.
Jeff?
I have nothing.
Okay. So just the one community report tonight. Uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the draft minutes for March 31st. Um, all board members except for Ms. Skamursky were present. So is there any uh. Changes or revisions to the minutes as posted? For March 31st? And that was the special meeting, I believe. Right?
Yeah, that was, yes.
That was a brief meeting, yep.
Yes.
Okay. No comments, revisions or questions? Okay. I need a motion to approve those. Kathleen, second. John, all those in favor? Approved. So we have several items for regular business that are not uh. Typical. We have again later on the, the RCG BOSI's information, but we'll start with item A, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any comments or questions? No questions? Uh, I need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, second. Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. So the first item is um, the election of the board members for the Rensselaer County Clement Green uh, BOSI's. On the uh, attachment that you have, we have um, three of the BOSI's board members who are up for reelection. One of them is our own Mr. Mann. So. Congratulations, Mr. Mann for their nomination. Um, we also have, let me just pull up the bios. I think it's Mary Giroux. And um, Frank Zwack, all from Rensselaer County. So any questions from Mark? For the uh, nominations? Okay. Seeing none, need a nomination to approve the board members, our vote for board members? John, second. Frank, all those in favor? Are you going to vote for yourself, Mark? Okay, that counts. All right. Unanimous. All right.
I want to thank Mr. Mann for serving on the Questar board. We work very closely with Questar and it's nice to have one of our local board members representing the district on the Questar BOSI's. Appreciate you putting in that extra time, Mark.
Okay. So we'll uh, hopefully have the results uh, after this evening from the other districts. All districts in the BOSI's region. Will be voting on both the board members and the administrative budget, which is our next item. There was uh, several of us attended the um, the annual meeting, which was uh, last week. For Questar when they presented the uh, administrative budget. And there's a letter there attached as well. Is there any questions about the budget that anybody would like to ask, Mr. Simons? Anything?
No, just to emphasize what was presented, that the administrative budget for next year is the same amount as it was this year. So there is no increase in administrative budget. And we appreciate that Questar BOSI's went to that length to keep that budget flat.
Very good. Any other questions or comments around the budget? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the budget. Deanna, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Very good. So we'll report those numbers to the board clerk for Questar BOSI GNI. Thank you. The next item, item D is the resolution to uh, move forward with the school reopening plan. Any final questions on that? School reopening plan? I don't see, I don't see any. I need a motion to move forward with that. Mark, I need a second. John, all those in favor? All right. Approved. Thank you. So the next one probably needs some explanation. Mr. Simons, you want to kind of talk about the resolution regarding state and environmental quality review related to putting up a tent?
We, in our plans, have included the use of tents. At DPS Elementary School and Goff. The priority right now is the DPS tent because of the timing of starting the uh, grades three through five on Monday. Uh, we have been in communication with our architect through both Paul Bickel, Linda and my office. Because the state requirements for use of tents. Are operated under the State Office of Facilities and some of the requirements are identical to what would be in place for. A capital project or a construction project. Some are less uh, restrictive. For temporary outdoor tents, uh, a SECR review is required, which the board has seen in the past. When we do a capital project. Our architect has to assure that the project itself will not cause any environmental disturbance. And what, it's called a type two uh, SECR review. Uh, we had our architect provide information on the tent, the location of the tent to our attorneys. Callie Heinrich issued the resolution. This is required for board approval to move forward with our SED approval. As well as we had purchased, I'll just talk about item F now.
Sure, the combined.
We had purchased a tent, two tents, actually three tents prior to the break. The two issues emerged with the requirements. Uh, from an email that we received from Singrid Koontz, who was our SED project officer. One. We have to make sure that the. Tent has a proper identification of fire uh, protection. There's a particular code that I can't remember right now. Maybe Linda knows. That we couldn't verify. We're on the tents that purchased for DPS and we were concerned we won't, it wouldn't be able to verify it. It was manufactured outside the country. The tent that was purchased for Goff is okay. So we're going to return that tent and we rented one from Country True Value today, thanks to Linda's efforts. That is larger and more suitable for what we want to use it for and has the proper fire coating. Uh, on it. So uh. If we bought the tent, used a bought tent, board doesn't have to approve it. If we lease a tent, under the state rules, board has to approve it. So that's why I added that at the end of the day today and I apologize for the short timing and notice.
We.
Get it right, Linda?
That's correct.
So this is a larger tent, exactly what Jack Alvey wants and has the appropriate fire coating for the state approval.
Very good. I think that's um, you know, we, we want to make sure our students can return. And we want to make sure it's done uh, the right way and a safe way and through the approval process. So. We knew I had to jump through little hoops to, to get that done. And I think the size of the tent, right, was, was the thing that kind of puts us over the edge.
It's a 20 by 50 foot, thousand square foot.
Nice, okay. All right. Any questions on the uh, SECR review? If not, I need a, a motion to approve that resolution. Kathleen, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Then we have item F, which is the tent rental agreement that we just did with Country True Value. Any questions or comments? All right. Need a motion to approve that. Mark, I need a second. Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. Uh, item G is the proposed change in policy, second reading. Um, we had this on first reading at our, our meeting last Wednesday. There were no questions or comments, nothing since, Mr. Simons?
No.
Okay. Any last minute comments or questions on this? Again, this was recommended by the, the school boards as a modification. Need a motion to approve that? Jennifer, second. Frank, all those in favor? Approved. So the property tax report card, I think we should take a, a few minutes and go through that, Linda. And then we'll.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buno. The property tax. It's required to be filed with SED every year. This year it is due on April 26th. And basically it's a review of our um, our proposed budget as well as our tax levy. Um, the current year as compared to our proposed for next year. Um, the percentage of change from budget, in the budget is 3.77%, which we talked about. The percentage of change in the tax levy is 0%. And um, it also talks about uh, in addition to the budget, it talks about fund balance as we um, had reviewed previously. The uh, projected fund balance report that I did. As well as um, it's a review of our, our uh, reserves that we have set up. What are, what reserves we have set up, what the purpose of those are and what we expect the balances to be. Are there any questions?
Pretty straightforward. Many of the board members have seen this on an annual basis and it mirrors a lot of the information that we've uh, reviewed before, as Linda says, the reserves. The budget, the tax levy, the tax cap. And then also uh, kind of something different is really the enrollment numbers are in there. So pretty much about the same. So. Um, and this gets reported, you said, by April 26th. Okay, very good. So. And we don't have a board meeting before then, except for this one. So, all right. Seeing no questions, need a motion approved, property tax report card for Linda? Kathleen, I need a second. Frank, all those in favor? All right, approved. Go forth and report away. Thank you. The um, next thing, uh, Mr. Simons, we had talked about this, I think, before, the summer 2021 driver ed program. And the proposal from, uh, I believe it was Mr. Tucker.
We had a lot of interest in the driver's education program that we operated during the school year this year. We have many more students interested in taking driver's ed. So Mr. Tucker, who coordinates the administrative portion of this program. Asked if we would consider a summer program. He put out a survey to gauge interest in the summer program. It was fairly, fairly high. Um, we are able to offer four different sessions, remembering that the instruction is virtual. So even if kids go on vacation, they bring their computer, they can take the classroom portion of the uh, driver's ed. We are one of the only districts in the area doing it. I think Shenandoah and East Greenbush are offering driver's ed. Um, four sessions, uh, different nights of the week, uh, an hour and a half. Of classroom, remote classroom time on dates that are specified in the plan. Um, there would be uh, still the responsibility of the parents to take the kids out driving with the state issued DMV. There would be still the responsibility of the parents to take the kids out driving with a state-issued DMV track checklist to make sure that those skills of driving are being measured and submitted to Mr. Tucker. We're not permitted right now to have car instruction with Bell's Driving School, for example, because of the requirement to have an additional adult in the car that's always been in place, and now you have COVID restrictions, so you can't have that many people in a car driving with COVID. Mr. Vander Wouldn is the teacher that currently teaches the classroom portion. He is able to do that over the summer. And the rate has been the same that the board agreed to during the year at $39 an hour. Mr. Tucker handling the administrative piece, developing the course, communicating with the parents, collecting the information sheets, handing it in would also be compensated at that rate. The cost breakdown is estimated on the number of students that would participate per section. We would anticipate 20 students, and right now, the cost for, for family is pretty reasonable compared to what it may have been on a different model, about $140 per student. So I'm recommending it. I think we've got a lot of kids that want to take driver's ed, a lot of parents that would like them to take driver's ed, enabling them to get their license a little earlier. And if the board is supportive of it, we'd like to start planning it.
Any questions for Mr. Simons on the proposal? Don't see any, so need a motion to move forward with that. John, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? All those opposed? I wasn't sure, Mark, if I got you too early. It's a yay? Maybe? Yeah, but it's a positive. Okay, I understand your concerns. You've expressed those before, so. All right, move forward with that. The last item on the regular business is the resolution for emergency weed control and fertilizer application for athletic fields. Anything, comments there? I see Mr. Leonard has joined us. Mr. Simons?
We have Mr. Leonard and Mr. Bickel. Is Mr. Bickel on here too?
Yes, I'm here.
In order to applicate fertilizer and weed control and other type treatments of our playgrounds and lawns and fields, there's a board policy and a state requirement that we have to follow. Board has to approve it. There is a communication that we would prepare afterwards, a notification to the parents that Questar BOCs is working with us on. This was approved by the board back in 2017, but when Brian Kraft left in transition, it was never applied. There are patchy areas, crabgrass areas, that we anticipate every fall, we want to do the treatment over the summer, and try to reduce that situation, fertilize, and try to get as much good grass as possible. And I'll leave it to Paul and Mike to explain how this would be done and when it would be done.
All right.
Time to go, Paul? Go ahead, Paul.
Sure. So Mike and I enlisted the help of a outside group, Harold's Company, and they've actually done quite a bit of work with other school districts in the same manner. They basically come in, they take soil samples, and they provide the best course of action to move forward with removing, you know, the weeds and, which, basically, the main reason we're after it, not just for the beauty of the fields, but for the safety of the kids. Last year, I was witness to a situation where the upper soccer fields over at Columbia, the amount of crabgrass on them, they actually, even with cleats on, they're slippery. They, and it makes for a dangerous condition, especially if fields are moist or wet or in any, in any way. So after reviewing this, Mike Leonard decided to lay out the fields that were of biggest importance to us. They put together a quote for us, which entailed two different sessions, one in early spring and one in August, in order to help alleviate the issue. The first application, which we hope to get in place soon, would include a spray, a overspray of a herbicide, which helps to kill off those weeds, and then an application of fertilizer and some other mixed fertilizers to give the grass the boost that it needs. After that, come August, they'd like to come in again, and actually, they'll do an overseeding with, and apply another fertilizer as well. So this, along with what we're trying to do from the district level, which we actually have a machine where we go out and we aerate the fields in the spring and the fall, and we oversee them ourselves. Between those two processes, we're hoping to be able to regain much better playable surfaces. I know Mike had several, several complaints last year from visiting coaches on the surfaces not being adequate to play on, and that they were worried about injuries. So we're hoping to use this to, to move forward with the quality of our fields. The cost is reasonable. We have, we decided not to go with all of the fields right off the bat. Mike chose just the softball and baseball fields at Columbia, as well as the upper and lower soccer fields at Columbia. So we'll kind of give it a dry run for a year and see how it goes. See, you know, what's, what we're able to gain from this. And the company also has a representation that'll be out on site after the applications, constantly monitoring the improvements and making suggestions for, for future improvement as well. So Mike, if you want to add in on any of that?
No, I do like the, I mean, once a month or twice a month, he actually lives right here in East Greenbush, over in August Gate, I believe. The reason this kind of came up with a lot of the complaints, I reached out to a lot of suburban schools, and just to name two off the top, Niskiuna and Boston Spa use the same company, and I could not believe their difference in their athletic fields, and then they're actually starting to use them in some of the general fields that they have. The improvement is awesome. The playing surface is great. You know, if you looked at Niskiuna's grass fields, I thought it was turf. It was so good. It was dense. There was no weeds. It was great service. And like I said, I like this guy coming back each month or twice a month, checking the fields, working with our grounds department, giving some suggestions. And I know Niskiuna and Boston Spa, and even Union College continues to use this company, and they've had great results. So I'm very excited to pursue this.
Any questions for Paul or Mike?
I've never learned more about grass, going out there with a guy, taking soil samples.
It's on the memo.
Be there.
66, not to exceed $6,200. It's on the first fertilizer, second page of the memo. It's called, it's just the, the one that's the memo. There's three, three attachments.
The first one.
The first one, the top one, yeah.
Broken down by each field. And it's for the two applications.
But what's, what's Paul talking about, once a month, once every other month, once a week?
That follow-up, Paul, is that an additional cost, or does that come within this cost?
No cost. That comes right with the cost. He comes in, he just wants to walk it, check on it, give suggestions, make sure that everything's going well to free. It's all part of the whole cost.
So the whole service is, is that package right there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I mean, our fields get a lot of use, and we want to keep them in good shape. Kathleen?
My question is just, if we put all this stuff down in August, can they use the fields? Because that's right when soccer season starts.
Yeah, actually, the plan is to, in the first or second week in August, our tentative start date for fall is August 23rd, so there'll be plenty of time when they do that. It's really a 24 to 48-hour process, that they don't want anybody on the fields. So we'll manage that, and it won't be a problem in August. Because we actually start a week late, we hope, we hope that we start on time this year.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike or Paul? All right, need a motion to move forward with that resolution. Kathleen, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved.
Thank you.
Very good, Michael. Okay, good luck, yep. The next part of our agenda, reports and presentations of the superintendent of schools, we have a school board special recognition.
Is Mrs. Taylor on the meeting?
Has she been able to join? No.
We may, we need to table this item. I don't want to do it without her here.
Sure, well, maybe we can do is, if she's able to join us a little bit later. I mean, we have a few more minutes probably in the rest of the agenda, but if she does pop on, so we'll, board members, okay, we'll postpone this to either later in the meeting or to the next meeting in May. Moving on to next item, tabled motions. I don't have anything. Old business. I don't have anything on my notes. Anyone, board members? No? Okay. The next item would be our consent agenda, so we have A through E. We have the financial reports. Any questions on the financial reports? The instructional, non-instructional support memo, I guess that's only a few folks there. No questions there. We have some gifts. And then the last thing, I think, maybe just warrants some conversation, is really the chiller rebuild. Can you talk about that, Mr. Simons?
Yes, when Vanelle Swarth and Paul and Steve Wickman, our architect, presented the awarding of the bids, item number 37 had not been fully considered yet. This is a state contract purchase for services from Train. And Paul, you can help me fill in the gaps. The high school chiller that control the air conditioning within the high school are due for a rebuild. We wouldn't be replacing those chillers with new chillers, but there's a rebuild that is approved as part of the referendum of 2017. And there was some weighing of how that work was going to be done, the warranty, and some other considerations that were still under discussion. Paul, you want to fill in the details where you can?
Absolutely, Mr. Simons. So there's two chillers at the high school, a small chiller and a large chiller. The small chiller, believe it or not, runs year-round. It is actually used because there's inner spaces in the school that get hot and actually need to be cooled throughout, even throughout the winter months, so that is in use right now. In the summer months, the larger chillers put online, and between the use of both of them, they're able to handle the capacity of the heating cooling or the cooling in the high school throughout the year. Right now, the units are approximately 16 years old. They're not at end of life yet, and they're not at the point to where SED will approve a complete replacement of the units. So the Train actually offers what they call a renewal program, which is basically, they come inside, they, they pull apart the existing chillers, and they replace all the internals. A lot of get, a lot of different gaskets, O-rings, things like that. All the, it's almost like a rebuild on an engine in a car, kind of the same thing. And because it's called a renewal, it does not count from SED as any type of replacement. So this will actually get us through to the 21-year mark. At 21 years, we're actually able to get SED reimbursement for replacement for those. So by doing the renewals, they're going to also install two new panels on each of them to give us better control of the units. And they are also, the option we chose gives us a five-year warranty on each unit as well. And we decided, at first, we were going to put it out to bid, but Train, being its own entity, we put it out to them first, and the pricing came back very favorable, we feel, for the, for rebuilding both units. So we feel the best way to go is with Train for the cost associated. The game plan, if you got, if it, if it is approved, would be this summer, they would rebuild the small chiller, because the large chiller is able to handle cooling needs at the school. And then come this coming winter, while the large chiller is offline and the small chiller is running, at that point, they would rebuild the large chiller. So that is the plan, as we hope for it to proceed, and if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
And Linda, the funding for this project?
This is part of phase three of the
Okay. Very good, okay. Any questions regarding the, this item? Hi, Michelle. Good to see you. All right, seeing none, I have by consent items A through E. Any final comments or questions? Need a motion to approve by consent. Kathleen, I need a second. Frank, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on to the next item, new business, board members, anything? Michelle? Jennifer? Board members present here? Nothing? Okay, a lot of nodding heads. So our second public forum, is there anything, Linda, that was come in since?
There are no public comments.
No public comments or emails? Very good. We'll go to our Board of Ed forum, second Board of Ed forum. We'll start virtually, put you on this, put you on the spot, Michelle, anything? You're good. Jennifer? What?
Mr. Pratt raised his hand.
Okay, yep, well, Mr. Pratt, welcome. Do you have some comments you'd like to add? I need to unmute Wayne.
So we found a way to get Mr. Pratt to come to a regular board meeting. We sent him the wrong link. So we apologize. Mr. Pratt thought, coming into this meeting, and that's why I was scrambling a little bit at the beginning of the meeting, thought that he was participating in a PTO budget session, I think.
You're early.
And he's early for that. So we apologize, Wayne, but we're, you're always welcome at the board meetings. So we did talk about you at the last meeting when we presented the budget. We did thank you, but now we can thank you personally that you're here. So you're on, Mr. Pratt.
Peter, is he, is he still muted? Yeah, he's still muted.
Mr. Pratt, you need to unmute your microphone.
Okay, there we go. Okay, thanks very much. This is Wayne Pratt. I have one comment, or question anyway, on the tents. What has been set up for any type of thunder, lightning storms, or windstorms to protect the children of whom, out of the tent and into the schools?
Those procedures would be in place in the building, certainly if we were having that kind of a storm. There's supervision of the kids going out and going in. They wouldn't be permitted to go out in the tent. And SED requires a description to be included in the submission of approval for the tent that describes that the, that weather monitoring will occur at all times when students are out there. So that exact paragraph was recommended by our project officer to put into the plan. So it will be monitored, and kids wouldn't be out there in the event of inclement, whether we'd have to make other arrangements. That could be the canceling of PE and using the gym, or some other larger space.
Yep, that makes sense.
Great question.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks, Wayne. I see that Ms. Taylor has joined us. Welcome, Joanne. So we will go back to an item that's on the agenda and under reports and presentations of the superintendent of schools. I'll turn over to Mr. Simons.
Okay, so this week, surprisingly for us, we, not surprisingly that we received this, but surprisingly that we were going to get this, we received a special recognition from the New York State School Boards Association for a lifetime achievement award for Mrs. Joanne Taylor. And that, if, if you were in person, Mrs. Taylor, and I'll make sure I get this to you, you are receiving from the New York State School Boards Association, a very nice plaque in appreciation for all of the, and I don't want to drop the plaque, so bear with me, for all of the points you have earned through attendance at conferences, professional For all of the points you have earned through attendance at conferences, professional development, 500 points for your active participation in leadership development as a board member in the New York State School Boards Association. So congratulations on that. I believe you also have a nice gift. I believe that might be a pen. And I have some sense that in this envelope is a free conference for the school boards conference. So congratulations, Joanne, for all the time you spend outside of board meetings, helping the community and in your service to professional development as a board member. You're being recognized by the New York State School Boards Association. We appreciate that about your activities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simons. It's a pleasure to, to do all this. I enjoy it immensely. I love working and giving back to the district.
Well deserved honor, Joanne. Thank you. And, and thank you for all the board members who, who have served and are, you know, are up for reelection again this year. And again, we want to, as we did last time, thank Jennifer for her service. It's very much appreciated. Volunteers, we have a lot of volunteer activity in our district and, and being a board member really is rewarding. I had the, had the opportunity to sit in with Mr. Simons at a workshop yesterday for aspiring superintendents. We had about 25 or so folks. And it was really about board and superintendent relationships and how superintendent and the board work together in the board president's role. And it was really a good conversation, a lot of good administrators who aspire to be superintendents, asking some great questions and really how important it is that, and then that the relationship between the board members, the superintendent, the leadership is critical to have a high functioning district and to lead the district into the future. And it's really the, the support that you folks have given me in my role, as also the expertise in, in the community, how much you admire and love your community, that you do this work on a, on a volunteer basis and give of your time. So it's really much appreciated and I know I've enjoyed my times and continue to enjoy it. And it was really a good conversation, very nice. So so sorry to add that. And, you know, we, we, this is a great board and I think, and I hope the community will continue to support our budget and the work that we do here. It's important work. And we are doing it on the behalf of our, our children and our families to do the best we can to, to make this a great district and a great learning experience for them. So with that, any final comments from board members at all? Here at the building? All right. We do have need for an executive session for purposes of personnel and contractual issues. We would do not anticipate any business after the board meeting. So I want to thank everyone for their participation tonight. Mr. Goodwin will send out an email shortly to the board members for the executive session. So have a great night. Thank you. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thanks. Bye.